Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. The regular council meeting is held in the council committee room and also the meeting webinars are recorded and published on the city YouTube. Site at trail dot C A YouTube. The first item on the agenda is to call it to order and I would like just. An adoption of the agenda, but we need to amend it slightly because we have the. BC Transit sorry coming in at about quarter after two, so we would like to just move up a couple of the department reports. If we could, we'll start with the public works and then yeah, once quarter after two, we'll get on with the DC Transit. So that's a friendly amendment, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. So and the adoption of the agenda as well, Council Martin and Council Wilson, all this in favor? Thank you. A resolution to move into the committee of the whole. I mean, a resolution from Council Wilson, thank you and Council Hanson, did I see? Yeah, okay, all those in favor? Thank you. So first up on the department updates, we have public works and it would be on to Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Our first. Presentation from Public Works this afternoon is from our new GM of municipal services, Jared Minor.
Good afternoon, worship counselors, thanks for having me. So being day five or week two, depending on how you want to look at it, not a lot to report on yet, other than. I've been welcomed extremely well, the group is amazing, the community is welcoming as well, I've been enjoying my time here. I am getting deep with each one of the departments over the next couple of weeks, doing a bit of a SWOT analysis, trying to understand the different groups, what they do. Where we can best be of service, looking for any opportunities we can to improve the quality or efficiency of our services, so. Look forward to working with you all in the near and distant future and thank you.
Well, welcome. Uh, okay, um, the utilities manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor Counselors. Um, here's a few little tidbits on what we've been up to over the last couple of weeks. We continue performing pre inspections and cleaning the trail pre trash wrap. Um, with the snow freshen diminishing, it is subsiding, so we're like, we're in good shape, I don't see any emergencies happening there. We just repaired a collapsed stormy on the Rested Drive, so that's Upper Sunnydale right by the park. Second hour, we repaired a collapsed catch basin at the bus stop, we're pouring concrete here tomorrow. Tentatively unless something else goes wrong, but that's how it is so far. Nineteen eighty talking street, we installed a new sewer service. Um, as well as cleaned all the CBs while they're out there at the same time. Continue to clear brush from a lot of water facilities, that's why I'm building quite the invasive species, so they grow faster than we can take them out. We performed twenty six water curb stop locates and shut off requests over the last three weeks. This morning, we began installing the Silver City Day streamers, as you noticed, that'll be finished tomorrow. Yeah.
AKA by.
Um, we had today, we're also working at two oh two Kootenay up in the alley. There's a four inch irrigation line that sprung a leak, so we're there right now. We're not, utilities doesn't typically look after irrigation, however, because it is such a big line, four inch, we take care of those. Three fourteen, which yeah, we have water main break there all within two days of each other, so we're there on Friday. That's taken care of. Charles Lake's Drive, that capital project, we had some geotechnical review. Two weeks ago, I'm still waiting for the report, so. That'll determine our alignment, where we're going to put that new twin watering, so once I get that report, it gets better understanding where we can put. Being the cemetery, our plumber installed. All new plumbing for the cemetery washroom upgrade. The T and C, the plumber also installed new toilets and plumbing in the gymnasium washroom. To that renovation, Fople Park, we also, he also. Plugged in four new sinks and a new drinking fountain, and today they're working on. At Gyro Park replacing the drinking fountain there. Um, we just repaired a vandalized streetlight electrical service box and conduit right behind seven eleven, that's where the stairs come down from. Out, so. I'm not sure what they wanted there, but they tried it and damaged it, so a bunch of conduits. Uh, we replaced several more failing purple LED streetlights, so that seems to be ongoing. We converted the Daniel Street stair lights to LEDs, so it should be a little brighter. And we just refurbished the fixed speed pump at the mural lights booster station. It's all rebuilt, it's not installed, that will happen Wednesday. Um, the R C and P building fire alarm system. We just had an inspection done, it's obsolete, it needs repairs, however, we can't get the components, so it's gonna, of course. It's a full replacement of the fire alarm system, so. That'll be through the city electricians and Troy life and fire safety, we're just waiting for their schedule and once they go more, I'll let you know. Training opportunities, our water treatment plant operator, Jan Douse has first day training on May twentieth. Uh, one of our electricians, Adam Pouchak, he's scheduled for a course called pumps and pumping hydraulics, that's on June tenth. And another course called arc flash and high voltage safety in July. Our water distribution operator, Jake Gilmour, he is scheduled for. Water distribution level one and his E L C P exam on June ninth, so that'll get him certified to level one. Um, and then he'll work towards ours to get level two and three, which is on your district. And that's it.
Council, any questions for quick?
Oh, sure.
No, that's okay. Okay, thank you very much. Onto our grounds and roads manager.
Uh, yes, Josh can make it, so I'm just gonna step in and have some notes from him to pass along. So our spring plan ran from April seventh to twenty third, it ran on budget and on schedule with very limited concerns and complaints. There's that transition to craft paper bags from the. Plastics, so we had limited use of the plastics, that's great, citizens are seeing that communications and following through with the. Craft bags. All of our parks, our major parks were opened up April seventh for user groups to prepare for that, there was a number of items that staff went through. From scrubbing the field with our Reco Vac, fertilizing, aerating and getting our irrigation system to energize. They are currently working through any minor spot repairs and in the irrigation and on the fields. The sweeper has made its first pass through the city and we are now working on the main corridor there, you'll see this week. Um, in preparation for Silver City Days, that is in conjunction with Y R B, who is cleaning the bridge, which is their infrastructure. We have also made concerted efforts on the parking lots as the line painters are now in town, so they will complete that over a little bit last week into this week. All of the handwork, so your crosswalks to our parking lots downtown, that. Work is being done and then their long line trucks will be coming in shortly after that to complete that. Craig touch on it, there is new water fountain being installed at Gyro Park, that is one that supports water bottle filling as well as the. Personal use. Through this week and into next week, a lot of effort will be spent at the cemetery in preparation for Mother's Day. So staffer will be out there starting, now that they can get into that facility, working on edging, reworking, cleaning, they'll have some support from career development services in that, so that. That facility is complete and the sweeper and flusher, they also go up just prior to Mother's Day to make sure that it is, is well on its way. And to that, again, as Craig spoke about, there's only one washroom at that facility in the maintenance shop, so the public does use that. It was showing its age and we. Spent some money there through the capital process in updating that washroom with updated facilities and fixtures. Um, that's all I have for you today on Grounds Roads, any questions?
Uh, Council Hanson, I actually just started rolling ground question, I'm not specifically really into that, just a conversation that was had around the association, could be every local government. Con- conference this weekend was about how much advance notice do you guys get from the Ministry of Transportation for any. Highways upgrades, just because we found or heard that from a number of municipalities that they jump in on a lot of upgrade, the capital infrastructure projects and how they can overlap. Or work in synergy with them, so would you have any background?
Yeah, yeah, through, yeah, sure, thanks. Yeah, I guess we can speak to an example that we had last year when they were repaving all of Highway three B and twenty two there through the corridor. They do reach out, or in that instance, they did reach out early, but it was alternative based on budgets, so you know, they, they have it within their plan. But they can't give us anything concrete until it's actually set within their budget and tendered, and then it becomes kind of public and concrete in their plan. To that's. You know, we did have one project that.
I was thinking like third app could have like worked in.
Yeah, he proceeded a little bit with that.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, it's kind of on their schedule and on how their budgeting works and when their plans are actually put into fruition.
No, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, the center. Okay.
Thanks, David, thanks for filling in.
Yes.
Okay, purchasing and mechanical manager.
Good afternoon. Adam Mayor, Counselors, Senior Staff and learned colleagues, thank you for the opportunity. I had had some other ideas about what my update would look like for today, but. Really wanted to stick with the exciting stuff, which is a number of new units which have just landed within the last about week and a half for the city, so. We'll start with our first one, which is our GLG personnel deck, so with a. Platform painted about just about thirty feet. And horizontal reach of twenty feet, we're going to increase our capacity of the small little straight up and down unit that we have right now currently. This unit would be used by all trades groups within the city and all facilities, basically anywhere where we have to. Get up and do work, so that includes lighting and different repairs of all different kinds. It'll alleviate the use of rental units largely, not entirely, but largely, and it would also alleviate our need to. Erect and then disassemble scaffolding, so there's some efficiency and some. Time saving there, so our next photo would be of our wash pad, we twinned our wash pads at Public Works. So it's a fairly significant change there in terms of capacity. These are used to wash vehicles and equipment, which happens on a daily basis, but also the pads are plumbed with fire iron and stand pipes to be able to fill. All of our water using units, so that includes the flusher truck, the sweeper, the backer truck, and even our smaller sweepers that have tanks on them, so. This really essentially alleviates a really big bottleneck at the end of the day when we have units coming in. To be washed and cleaned, but also throughout the day, and especially when we have. At times, regional partners using our filling station and stuff, there's nothing worse than seeing. One or two units stacked up waiting to get filled, well, one unit is filling at a time. Fill off a four inch line, it goes fairly quickly, but even still, any sitting time where we're not actively moving or. Doing something is time we'd like to getting back if we can. Um, additionally, and this is a bigger one for me as well, it keeps the, the area behind the mechanic shop and across from what we affectionately call the bus barn. Quite a bit cleaner because we'll be able to wash down in that area. As opposed to washing in areas that are high foot traffic and high vehicle traffic, so stuff like, in terms of washing of dump trucks or trimmers or mowers. We're now, we're not tracking that material across the public works share, and so. Um, then onto our new trimmer, so our new trimmer is a. Four oh thirty five hundred, slightly different than the old version, this is a three wheel unit, which is essentially makes it almost a zero turn, so. Really nice and tight. It has an amazing sixty eight inch width of cut, so that's a fairly large cut for that style of machine, it's the largest in the industry. They have a, what they refer to as a contour cut technology, which increases the quality of the cut as it uses air vents. That blow back and stand the grass up as you're cutting it and blows the. Pet grass away from where you're cutting, so you were talking about a playing field, very, very high end, high quality cut there. Additionally, probably the coolest thing about this unit is that it has a twenty four inch side shift. So the one deck will shift out twenty four inches in one direction or the other, so what that really does for us. It alleviates wear on turf in areas where you traditionally would have only one or two. Patterns that you could drive over a certain area, so now that allows our pattern to change, but also it allows you to shift over with the machine. And cover your tire tracks, you're cutting over tire tracks in areas where you wouldn't be able to do that before. So additionally, this unit is designed for increased smoking, they say up to thirty percent, I certainly would not necessarily jump right on that immediately, but. What it does is it's fairly very low center of gravity and it is a full time three wheel drive. So the unit is set up to be able to cut on wet conditions and on steep hills as well, so. We went with the superior seat and the unit is noted for its operator comfort, so if you can imagine a six or seven hour mowing day. We want to give people the best ergonomic opportunity to be successful, so. That moves me on to next set of photos, there is our new large mower.
Holy cow.
Slightly different than the recent, than the one that we had that we're replacing, which had a fully enclosed glass cab. But through discussions with. Roads and grounds group and the turf, regarding the townspeople and the turf people, they have decided that this is a superior machine regardless of the cab. Configuration change, so this is the real workhorse in our mowing fleet. It has over nine feet of mowing decks, so that's a big swath per pass and, and this unit is noted to be able to cut ten point six acres of turf. In an hour, so that really will push us along rather nicely. Again, this unit has floating decks, now we first got into those configurations for decks at the cemetery. And what we found was that provides a superior cut over extremely rough and steep ground, so. That is both again, the contour with the airing lets, but also has large rollers, so it allows this deck to, as they say, float. And it puts us in a really great position to do super high end work, including. Um, if you've driven past the Rosslyn or the Trail Cemetery on the Rosslyn Hill, pardon me, you would notice that it's strike. On, right after cutting day, you'll look at it and it looks quite sharp because the way the decks go across it, so we'll be able to. Put that in play in our playing fields as well as our past parks, so. This unit is also a four wheel drive and is set up for operator comfort, so. Additionally, I will add that we had a planning session for the Joint Occupational Health and Safety Committee meeting, which was quite robust last week and. We've got some plans, that will be my next update for you guys, I promise, but I got all some shell sign, shine stuff to do today, so. Additionally, last piece that I have for you today is that we. Are just concluding our student hiring for the summer today, so I'm off for letters and regret letters have gone out. Today, so that was a busy part of last week, but it was a great part of last week, we had some really, really good candidates. So that's all I have for the day, any questions?
Any questions, Council Johnson? So you'd use the forty five hundred on like the cemetery, where else, where would you use, what else, what other park would you use this one on?
Um, and through the chair.
Oh, sorry.
We currently utilize our forty five hundred, we have a forty five hundred at the cemetery, which we brought down. Last summer, while our older unit which we're replacing was in the shop and we would utilize this unit in all major parks.
Okay.
This one will be everywhere from Centennial and the only place we don't use it is maybe really on the. The high end, high end, like Butler Park and stuff, we would use the smaller trimmer typically, so. Anywhere where we've got big real estate, like upper and lower Sunnydale, Fople Park, out in Winita, places where we can get long runs, so.
Why don't you move it around?
Previously, we did what they refer to as roading, which is just that it is licensed and has a road lighting kit. Could be roaded, but the plan with this unit will be, it will be going on its own new trailer. To alleviate issues with the drivetrain being kind of overfluss, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you to the chair, yeah, how many summers do you show, what's in the memory?
We interviewed eleven to, one backed out, so we have ten interviewees, we are looking for seven. Configuration being one in utilities group, one in the public works. Warehouse group and the remainder going up to the cemetery and into the, so it would be a three, five split depending. And that will allow the roads and grounds manager to be able to. In recent years, we've had really good luck with moving some people around, now we have some considerations this year. That we won't have that, but we would be definitely able to move some people as needed from the cemetery down into. The public, uh, into the roads and grounds side, so depending on where we need the extra help, so seven total.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, I saw through the opportunity.
To the chair, I just have to excuse myself, but I will be.
Sure, okay. Can talk with Sandy and Sue about easy transit, they're, they're on my. Oh, okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the engineering department and the manager of engineering and projects, Ben.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thanks for the opportunity, unfortunately, I couldn't be here a couple of weeks ago, I felt ill, but I'm happy to be here today. My update comes in the form of two staff reports. Or our accused that went out, people had an opportunity to see those reports, I'm gonna go through them and make my recommendations.
That'll, that'll be later.
That'll be later, not yet.
If you wanna, if you wanna, just maybe, we'll, we'll maybe flow Brendan in and, and we'll leave you two after you have to stay right now.
Sure, okay, I can give you some updates on the engineering department, those projects have been moving forward. We've been working through disconnecting utilities of those buildings and. Getting prepared for the award of the contracts, as far as other work within the engineering department, we are waiting for these type of projects to see if we're going forward with. Some improvements along during the avenue, as well as doing addressing upgrades for our NG nine level, that's ongoing. Our mapping are continuing to be updated, moving over to a new server, it's a long process, but I feel like we're nearing the end of that. And then our day to day operations is mainly dealing with people coming in for property concerns around spraying property lines, retaining walls. So doing assessment or inventory and making sure that the concerns are heard.
That's most of what I have for the engineering department, any questions?
Thank you, Ben, I love your coming a little bit later, I'm sure I'm here there, okay, is your question, yes, go ahead.
I have a question now, maybe something that I would ask later, but because we're dealing with another matter. Staff report, but I think it's kind of relevant, I just have a question regarding the demolition of my industrial camp, if all goes according to. When do you anticipate the earliest start date for that demolition and how long do you think it will take to demolish it? Is that possible answer right now?
I speak to that here, so.
Are we ready for that?
You may be better just to have that all as part of the, of the two.
It's, yeah, it is coming up.
The method for my madness here is because it ties into this. Point B, the staff report that we're doing for the downtown. Improvement advisory committee, so these were some questions that I had that might be relevant. But it's, it's fine, no, I can wait.
Either I'm happy to speak to her or I'm happy to wait.
No, I don't, I'm happy to follow protocol.
Ben, you're gonna be here for a few minutes, right? Yeah, so we can ask Ben at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cashel.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to parks and recreation, we have the facilities maintenance manager, please.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, I'd like to provide an update for. My department to you all. On the project side, Trail Memorial Center, as you know, we have our two major projects are about to get started. And with the unfortunate elimination of the smoke heaters in the playoffs, we will be. Having commencement date of May fifth for the refrigerated floor project. Uh, that will be the, just the initial stages to get started, so the site preparation, security, as well as the dashboard removal and into demolition. Then for our, our heat recovery, our rooftop unit replacement project, we've held our initial kickoff meeting between city staff, Midwest mechanical, floor engineering. And so as some of those details unfold, we're looking forward to solidifying a start date for that project as well. And with ice, season point two and our staff is transitioning away from. The arena to head out into the parks and facilities a little bit more to. Get all of those ready for the summer season. Uh, we, there was a, held a big event on the weekend, I'll let David speak further to it, it was a. A very nice surprise between the Vancouver Canucks and Laena that. For that, the, both the check and the opportunity to host them. And yeah, cruiser currently working hard behind the scenes to get prepared for Silver City Days, and so we're looking forward to. Getting everything screwed up and. Ready for the weekend. Uh, we hosted RF ABC, which is a well-known trade provider for recreation facilities. At Telfly held a pool operator level one course and we were able to fill many of the spots with staff, multi aquatic center and the arena. And we have one staff member who is going to be enrolled in their fourth class. Parenting our course at the arena, which will be quite a large upgrade for us and increase our in-house staff knowledge. And that's all the questions, or sorry, that's all the update that I have, so any questions?
Okay, is there any questions from council? I, I had a quick question, when do the spray parks go on at the general park, when do we turn that water on?
Oh, coming, coming week.
Are they, okay.
It'll be on for sure before Silver City Days, they just need to energize and then make sure there's no breaks or anything like that.
Okay, I, with just with the weather getting so warm, I had a couple of calls, so, okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next one up is the acting director, David.
Hello again, your worship, Council, I don't have too much to you for you, so I won't take up too much of your time. So as Brendan alluded to, we hosted the Vancouver Canucks in Laena sixteen eleven. In a wonderful afternoon of events on ice, we had three on ice sessions with Greater Trail Minor Hockey. The first session was all female participants and then we had two more sessions, one U seventy nine and one U eleven to U thirteen. We had about forty participants in each session, they ran for about thirty five minutes of on ice scales with Kirk McLean, Rob Braithwaite. And then their local coaches and then they'd spend about ten minutes of each session doing signatures and, and some getting to know Kirk McLean and stuff like that. We also hosted a public skating that the public could attend and as well Finn, Kirk McLean. And others were out there participating in that as well, and then obviously the icing on the cake was the presentation of a hundred thousand dollars for the game changer Reno. Which was much appreciated, and again, we thank all those that nominated the city of trail for that, as it was not done by the city in any capacity, that was community outreach, so we appreciate that. Recently, the West Cooney Minor Softball Association came to council for a grant and aid, they are trying to fundraise and fund a. Batting cage at Haywood Park, so in the background, staff is working with them as they would like. Um so in the background, staff is working with them as they would like to lease a portion of Haley Park um for that batting cage. The caveat being we lease the Haley Park from Tech Technical, um so staff have been in contact with Tech. Um that has been approved, um but we need to work through a lease agreement on the city side, which then will come forward to council for final approval. Um before they can start any kind of construction once they've reached their funding goal. Um and finally, through my office is just the final push for Silver City Days um coming up in. Nine days, um and so we're just finalizing some of the details on the operations end. Um with uh full concerted effort starting on Monday of uh next week. But that's all I have um for my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions for David, also handsome?
Not a question, but I just coordinating that with minor hockey for the Canucks event, that's outstanding. My son with the new setting, the nine group and he was kind of, you know, having a moment with hockey. And then he's like, oh my god, do you see this? I got it signed by Finn. And he was like back in at the camp the next day and he was back at it, so thank you.
And through the chair, I do wanna, you know, um as much as we wanna thank Vancouver Canucks and Launa, but. Um Greater Trail Minor Hockey, they really helped in setting up those sessions, providing um volunteer coaches to help on ice. And Jim Manago um was helping just organize the whole event and get the the minor hockey side, so we appreciate all that assistance. Um from them, so yes, thank you for that.
Great, thanks for letting us know that, David. Is there any other questions? I'm just really sorry I had to miss that event, it looked like so much fun, the pictures were.
Yes, it was, yeah, it was great, so.
That's great.
Yeah, it seemed like the kids will enjoy it, so. That's all it matters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming today. Now, you're welcome to stay or you know you can go if you have to, but I think we're moving on to B C Transit right now. Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is our delegation today, we have Danica White. Uh government relations manager and Sal Sethosis. Project manager, capital projects with B C Transit to present the Trail Transit Exchange.
Hi, can you see me and hear me okay?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, my colleague Sal is going to share his screen in the presentation, so maybe I'll just let him. Take a minute and. Do a screen share and then I will start. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So I am Danica White, as mentioned, I'm the government relations manager for the Thompson and Cootney region of B C. I had the pleasure of talking to some of you um over the weekend at the convention in Kimberly. So I'm the main point of contact for all things um. Typically, all things transit, I work closely with the staff from the regional district of Cootney Boundary. Who is the funding partner with B C Transit for uh local transit. I also coordinate the West Cootney Transit Committee, which brings together elected officials from the regional district of Cootney Boundary. Regional District of Central Cootney and the City of Nelson, who are the three funding partners for the West Cootney Transit System. And I'm supported by a team of subject matter experts, including Sal Sethiados, the infrastructure project manager who is here with me today. Go the next slide. So just a quick background, um Sal's gonna give you an update on this Trail Transit Exchange. So B C Transit has been developing plans for a new transit exchange to improve the customer amenities and support future service expansion. You might recognize the current exchange. Uh the technical study was completed several years ago and three options were presented. The city of Trail and the regional district approved the project in principle in twenty twenty-two and supported the location at Cedar and Helena. And B C Transit then developed a business case and secured federal funding. And then stakeholders were engaged on this um Cedar and Helena option. So it's sort of a little bit of the background, and I know that there's some conversations going on uh right after this about the demolition of this building. And I'll be working with uh staff and the operating partner, um P W Transit on how we're going to coordinate. Moving the exchange and keeping transit going through that demolition, so. Um but today we're talking about the transit exchange, the new exchange at the new location. And the sort of design phase that the B C Transit team is at now. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Sal to walk through sort of where we're at at the design phase.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. First, I would uh like to uh thank everyone for inviting us and I will. Walk you through the sixty percent detailed design, uh the scope and how we move forward and what is the process uh that we have. Used to achieve the sixty percent detail designing. So the scope of the project is six bus pads, the concrete bus pads, which we will have at the. I mean, and the edge change, uh three bus shelters with nine benches for the commuters. And related utility works and electrical powers and all uh other utility works also includes uh stormwater sewage. Uh reconnection and connection of the lements, so those are the ones uh that includes in the utility works and sidewalk wa- widening. And related painting works and other landscaping and irrigation systems. So this project will also have six bike racks, uh they change a washroom facilities. And we will, this project will continue to engage the public as well as fascinations. And the project will deliver a safe design certification that is security achieved through functional and momental. Uh so this is being reviewed by a safe design team. And the the whole team that reviews the design or technical committee. Uh this is internal to busy transit, a project development team, that's again a busy transit entity. A trial city project team, uh we shared it with the city. And IDKB project team, uh we shared for their comments too. And the safety and training uh department of B C Transit. Operation and operations and operating companies of B C Transit and the save design uh team. So all those uh together, we review and the processes. Uh to get the comments, uh for example, the thirty percent detail design was completed. And then uh we uh. Um so submitted to all the stakeholders, uh these designs were reviewed completely and then. We uh discussed over the comment and went through and every uh comments have been addressed and we move forward with more detailed design at this stage. And we have achieved a sixty percent detailed design. And to uh share the the drawing at this point of time, this is sixty percent, so. Uh it's not rendered or uh it's just a engineering drawing which I could share and. A better drawing with rendering of the actual location will be submitted or will be shared with you uh. In ninety-five percent detail design. So this is the location uh between Helena and Portland Street, and as we can see, there is a bus stop. Hope everyone can see this uh drawing. And there is a small uh washroom facility where I'm pointing to. And beside that, there are the bike racks. And the small uh rectangular part is the bus shelter that is proposed here. And these um parking stalls, the angular parking stall have been modified to accommodate. Uh better um movement of the buses, so. I'll go to the next trains, yeah, this is between the Spokane and Helena Street. And you can, as you can see, uh there are. Three bus stops and two here in the north side, and there is a bus shelter out here. And we are trying to even have um. Landscape and uh landscape design is not yet completed, we are still working on it, and we will see that. The the best option can be implemented, so uh still under design. So uh with this design. There are around thirty parking stalls have been taken up. So the thirty parking stalls, we are still working with our designer as well as with the city. To locate uh elsewhere uh in and around the downtown area. So that we can accommodate as much as possible. And as on April fourth, the project updates are sixty percent detail designs complete. Uh it has been reviewed by uh subject matter es- experts and the stakeholders, including City of Trail and IDKB. Uh review comments have been uh updated and responded to all the owners. And we are progressing towards the ninety-five percent now, right now, and we expect that project uh construction. Uh to commence something around fall twenty twenty-five, and we expect this project to complete early twenty twenty-six. The next step is to complete ninety-five uh percent detail design. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you, uh Councilman Martin.
Uh thank you through the chair, uh that washroom, is it gonna be for drivers only or is that gonna be a public access washroom?
It'll be a public access washroom.
Okay, thank you.
Uh well, Councilor Benson, thank you through the chair, um who would maintain the the washroom?
Uh that will be uh city's responsibility, um yeah.
Okay, Pastor Hanson, thank you, um so. I'm just looking at, you know, timing, timing is everything in every project. And while the location of this bus exchange was approved five years ago. At the time, that set was occupied by two derelict buildings with no open storefronts and limited commercial activity. Since then, of course, the dynamics of the area have fundamentally changed, we now have the opportunity to deliver the first new. Commercial residential mixed-use uh development in decades, you know, that's a key step for us in revitalizing our downtown core. Um and so, given the timing of the ongoing demolition um and new construction. Where where are we at with the potential to delay this? Because I think at this point, we are, you know, cart before horse. Now we have new things going in, but we're demolishing behind it. But now are we adding a construction um concerns for new developers to develop that space? Costs um issues, um I I mean, I I just trying to figure out how we can best support transit, but. You know, realize how this could potentially impact a brand-new development in our downtown core. Instruction costs for them, um you know, reduces visibility if you have anything that's commercial on that main floor with open. Open fronts and stores, they've got obstruction in there, um you know, I just, I think. If there is a way that we can hit pause, I think we need to hit pause right now. Until we actually look at where we are going with nine hundred Spokane and then oh oh one Helena.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hanson, I um. Go ahead, Councilor Benson. Thank you through the chair, I also wanted to ask about the, is it okay if I ask another question or did you wanna address? Well, I was just going to ask um Mr. McCourt to uh if he had any information about, I think he's been in a. Conversation with B C Transit.
Yeah, I think the concern just is about the timing of how long the funding is available from the federal government, that's one of the key components. Very valid points, um there's a number of valid points on here, it's it's difficult to understand, I see a few things where they're gonna. And if you notice, they want to take trees out uh down by, and it's not really necessarily something that I think council really wants to have happen in our downtown. To take us to the trees that are more down by. The uh Southford College, um also the parking, that's a huge amount of parking to lose, and so that's really something. You know, without knowing what you are going to put in for development uh on that space. To lose that many parking spots is really, I think, could be detrimental to the downtown flow and for the business owners. Uh so those are definitely some questions, I also, as I've asked before, is some of this creation that we're looking at. That has been proposed is for a future transit system, but if you're creating a bus stop that's not gonna get used for. Three or four years because they don't have the number of buses that they currently need to fill it. Those are other things that I just think council needs to be aware, because we never wanna have the, you know, came, built this bus stop with a, you know, a uh. Location um and it doesn't get used. That's the, that's the one of the fears, unless it's sort of like, well, it's gonna get used here, so this is one for the the ninety-eight, but down, you gotta go get the forty-two or whatever it is, and then. And of course, the one thing, at least we're standing now, you know, the bus is all coming in that line, but then I'm supposed to be running down to catch the ninety-eight in front of. Southfield College or if I'm, uh this and that's maybe done signage and education, but those are some of the things that certainly I think needs to be. They care at any other side of it for me is that you don't have any sense for this, it's just a top-down photo, there's no sense of what that's looking at for street skate as far as. What do the bus stops look like? What does it look like as far as coming these buildings, uh planting some trees, okay, are we placing trees that are looking at taking down? Uh so those are, again, there's, for me, there's a lot more questions that have come out of this than. That even from almost the last time we met and discussed where we were gonna get some result. Now, the washroom piece, definitely to be clear, uh having that washroom. Uh location, I think is important for our downtown to have a public washing uh location, uh and it was a partnership, so there's definitely going to be. A portion that will be for the drivers, and that's totally, well, that would be their responsibility for kind of maintenance of that. But uh as part of that conversation of having a washroom in our downtown, there would be an expectation that the city did have um. Responsibility for, you know, it's, you know, almost like created by B C Transit but used by our public, so there would be our responsibility to be sort of that maintenance piece. Of course, that comes with its own challenges, uh of how people use it, what's happening with it, how what's going on with that and. But I do know that we are one of the few communities that doesn't have public washing in the downtown, and I think that there's um, you know, uh. Something that council needs to be able to consider and be thinking putting resources towards having. Of course, you would have to make sure that it would probably, and this is the challenge with some of it, and especially with the local group is the community. The state task force is, if people are expecting that to be open twenty-four hours a day, uh after, or even after four o'clock or three thirty on. You know, on a days, is it open on the weekends, like who's coming in to deal with that, and then so there's a lot of logistics questions that we also would need to understand. But uh the fact that you would have a a washroom in the downtown, I think is a positive thing, um how it's managed is sort of a. A further question for council.
Thank you. Councilor Benson, uh yes, um through the chair, my question was around, so you mentioned thirty parking. Spaces would be removed, and uh just wondering, as we weren't council of the day when this went through in twenty twenty-two, was that always on the. In the plan and what is the thought of? This might not be a B C Transit question, but what is, is that a surprise or is there a thought of where?
I think that there was always sort of a recognition that there will be some parking loss, uh certainly the parallel on the storefronts out front of. Across from Spokane and that's really, that's okay, that's a bit of a surprise when I see that, um does that mean, I mean, you know, part of it was trying to create the space. For uh the buses to be able to kind of get in and maneuver there, it's a pretty wide sidewalk, so I don't know if it means to do a little bit less, which allows us for parallel parking. The buses aren't there that long, so one of the, one of the challenges that you kind of have to have look into is, what is the frequency, what is the structure? Do you really need to have parallel and why is it this parallel is because of uh, you know, the width that they're coming out from the sidewalk extension? So again, more questions that we would need to understand, um I also not sure, there's another space at the back by Portland there. Um and I have suggested to them, I said, I don't understand why we would take out five parking spots there. When we already have the buses, B C Transit buses sitting on the curve there, and we could chalk that out or or line mark out, you know, B C, you know. Transit parking spot, uh then we wouldn't lose any parking on that end of it, uh they haven't come back to us, like, but I, that's one of the suggestions that I've had and trying to. To look at that, um again, where else can we find standard parking? I don't know if B C Transit is interested, if they can take that many spots away, and I don't know how popular it is to say it, but we've got sort of that mirrored area there with the retaining wall. Is that the best, you know, use of that site? Could we, you know, as much as you, I don't know how. Have to be careful, you know, about the idea of taking any kind of walls down, uh but that wall there with kind of the broken pieces and what's going on. Could that be cleaned up and do you pour a proper retaining wall and make that a much larger parking space that's already sort of. You know, in place, you know, sure, there's gonna be some city contribution towards that, but is that something that we could do to try to um increase the parking that we're losing? So, you know, a number of good questions that are coming up here that we need to get our heads around for sure.
Uh Councilman Martin.
Uh thanks to the chair, it's for calling, what do uh Southford College and. What do South Park College and, for instance, the Bailey Theater, what do they think of the potential being the main entrance kind of in and out of the building and losing the parking stalls? What's, what are their thoughts? And it's just a question.
Yeah, no, and it's a great question because that's the same question that the columnist asked me in the next meeting on the report. So there's a, I think there's, you know, this is where this kind of comes here, we're at sixty percent. They're like, hey, we're going to ninety percent, now we're going to have this and leaving drives. And I don't know, there needs to be said, like I said, a pause of what has South Park going to take it? We've got potential of other construction in that area as well. There's a lot kind of going on and I understand that at the time when this was all sort of sorted out as the spot, there wasn't this kind of conversation of of some of the revitalization and improvements we're looking after the community. So, but it's a great question. There there seems to be that, you know, on a, an opportunity to discuss some of that. I mean, I know that the columnist and I would say the B C Transit has committed and where they're at for some of these, I don't know. But, you know, that the buses, you know, idle there and then you get phone kind of stuff. But we do know the B C Transit is moving towards electric buses, they're having an electric fleet. Now, where exactly that ends up, how many years, I don't know, but that would be something that would sort of solve itself in future times, but doesn't answer the question today.
Thank you.
Councilor Castle.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, thank you, Council Hanson. I support your suggestion. To me, it's, like I said, put in the cart before the horse. We don't know what's going to be developing down there. They're going to be building structures on the, on a site that could impede future production of of what we're planning to build there. So my question is, how do we pause it? Does it take a motion? Do we have the authority to pause it?
Well, it's your, this is your downtown. Right? We're, B C Transit is an excellent partner and it's just probably some conversations. I think the biggest fear or concern for them is, is that what's the clock is starting ticking once you get the grant. So if you, if you push that past the time, then all of a sudden, there's no exchange improvements because we have no funding for it. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen and I don't know all the timing. I think the part that gets concerned if you're B C Transit is the cost of construction. I mean, it just, each year, it just kind of continues to to climb, which is not unexpected. But that's also a fear of, well, we were going to give this with the money that we had with the grant. Now, what do we do if if there is, and can they even extend that timeframe on on the federal, is it federally funded, the grant that we receive?
Well, I think I would be a little bit wary of pausing anything until we have some more conversation. I don't, I, you know, this, we've already been looking at this for almost five years and things have changed so much over that little period of time. I think we, I would be worried about president and losing the grant or losing the opportunity to do this at this time. So I don't know if we're ready for that conversation completely. It's definitely something that we would have to look at. I am thinking forward, I remember previous conversations when we were talking about the the bus stops. I was inquiring about docking stations for electric bikes. I I don't know if there's anything that would be in this area for that. If if B C Transit has thought about that, I think that's something important that we need to look at. Especially think, you know, thinking forward a bit when you are getting more electric, you know, wheelchairs or electric strollers or whatever it looks like. I just think, you know, thinking about that, something in that kind of make sure it's in the design. And I haven't heard anything or seen anything on this document about that as well. So it looks like we need to have more conversations. But I'll leave that up for council to decide, I guess. Council Hanson.
Now, I know there was alternative locations. And so I suppose my question is, yes, it was voted upon, you know, five years ago for this location. But is it something that can come back to council to amend? Maybe that isn't the correct location now, given the timing and all the things that have happened and are happening. You know, I think we want to make it, we don't have develop, new development in trail. We don't have new development in our downtown core. And I mean, we're looking at a really incredible opportunity here. And I just, I just think to attract, you know, a new building is meant to be kind of a high end, a new premier kind of space, right? And and so does this, having the bus exchange in front of that, does that hinder the opportunity to find great tenants in those spaces, great commercial opportunities, investors for a development in that space? You know, can we, you know, and I'm not sure if this is a Colin or Tracy, you know, a decision that was made five years ago, can we bring it back to the table and relook at other opportunities?
Well, I mean, the fun piece is that I think that B C Transit had moved forward using the grant based on the location that was chosen and then the direction that they received from the council that time. So I, that's again another question that would have to be raised. They've already invested a lot of time, money, except for into the current location. One thing I would say is that in particular, having housing around the transit exchange is something that the B C government is very supportive of and and I think it could be actually more of a benefit than maybe, you know, that one might think that it's, that it not being. But again, all solid kind of questions and and it would appear to me that it might just be a case of me having to set up a meeting with B C Transit and just kind of go through some of the some of the thought process that you've got here and come back to council, just saying, you know, here's some, you know, here's some deadlines, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do. Yeah, I understand the conundrum that we're in and but also wanting to respect the hard work that B C Transit has done on our behalf on trying to upgrade our our transit access.
Thank you. Benny, Danica, did you have any comments or anything before we move on?
Sure. So through the chair, I'll just confirm a little bit of the funding parts of it because that is it is an important piece. So this is a three point seven million dollar project. And right now, a lot of it is funded through the Federal Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, which means that local government is paying for about twenty percent of this project. Without that ice of funding, which which is ending now, it is being replaced by a different funding program. So without that federal funding, projects like this are typically cost shared with the province at a cost share of about fifty fifty. So that does make a difference. So certainly, you know, we're thinking about the opportunity of utilizing this federal grant. It it is unlikely to be there in the future.
Thank you, Council Hanson. I guess the question is, thank you, Mayor Jones, when does the spending expire? Because I mean, we've done five years of, you know, getting to this point and we're only at sixty percent. So are we, you know, a hundred percent come three years from now? Based on the timing thus far. So I just trying to figure out timing and when this money has to be used by.
I'll pass that over to Danica. Do you have any of those answers to the question?
I will have to get back and confirm a date unless, Sal, you happen to know. I know we're getting to the end. I think we've sort of requested extensions a couple of times already for it.
That's right.
Do we have a timeline?
Right now, I don't have it. Probably we may need to reach out to the Capitol folks and get a timeline.
You know, we might be able to postpone it like a year or something, but it it wouldn't be something that I imagine we could postpone like five years or something until you had new buildings and new developments likely already built in that area. But we'll, I'll get back to you on details for that.
Okay, so, Council, Mr. McClure has suggested that we set up a meeting with B C Transit as just the council.
I don't, just, I just thought I could start to run through some of the, it's, like I said, have the, be able to bring them back with, here's, here's our kind of hard stuff dates, there's some of the other questions that we had. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you both for coming today and that was a lot of information and we'll be getting back to you, I guess, with some questions and concerns that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item number six. The staff reports and we have the monthly staff report of the invoices paid for the mess services. And the recommendation is that council consider and resolve to receive these for information. This is something to make that motion. Council Martin and Council Castle. All those in favor? Thank you. The draft terms of reference for the Downtown Improvement Advisory Committee and I will pass that on to Tracy.
Thank you. So this is our first draft of what came out of the notice of motion by Council Benson. And I've just provided the draft and hope that there's further discussion on amendments or additions that you would like to see to this. I think one of the questions that Council Cashall had would be a good time for that discussions. I think that's where you were kind of going with that. So but that maybe Ben, you want to just let us know that the question from Council Cashall earlier about timelines on this, when you expect, if the order goes through tonight, when you expect things to start happening and when you think they may conclude.
So through the chair, the original date was May fifteenth with an expectation that we'd be getting immediately following Silver City days. Obviously, we're postponed two weeks for one, we're going to invite you to the council. So I'm still hopeful that we can split that difference and possibly start a meat plate, which was at the middle of May. We gave ourselves a healthy timeline of September nineteenth for completion of all projects. And everything that I've seen within the proposals was that it can be completed in that timeframe also recently soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So basically, I just putting this out there for comments.
There's a question through the chair is the timeline on the Downtown Improvement Advisory Committee. When does it expire? Does it expire at the end of this term?
Yes, they all, they all would unless, I mean, the new council now reappoints.
So it basically goes into formity until the new election and next term?
No, every committee stays stays active. It's just what counselors would be on that committee.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, and that's at the will of council. Council can eliminate a committee at any time.
Council Hanson, thank you, Mayor Jones. So just in review of the terms of reference, I mean, I have been involved in my previous role being a counselor with the downtown opportunities in action with committee for that, I think it was the downtown revitalization committee. And now, because of the lack of having an official, you know, active city downtown committee, the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee, which was comprised of, you know, the Chamber or Chamber of Commerce, the Trail Times, Atalka, because she's down with the people, you know, all the time. You've got Jason Milne from the Royal Theatre, Jessie from Step Stance. You've got this mix and, you know, part of it is to be the conduit of communications and for businesses from, you know, with having Council Butler and I as liaisons as and and being able to be a conduit of information as well as, you know, looking for ways to improve the viability and the visibility in the downtown core, you know, hence the crime prevention through environmental design study. And and so my my thoughts or, you know, thoughts, concerns kind of wrapped into one is, is this a duplication of what's being done by a non-city committee kind of already? And is there a bigger role for them to play through our work as council liaisons to facilitate communications to the business community out there that they're already working with? Or, I mean, does this need to be broadened to incorporate some of those things that should be done with our downtown core and implementing the crime prevention through environmental design principles? We've just gotten a draft of that, which they will be coming to council with once finalized, as well as, you know, looking for ways, you know, to implement low hanging fruit or opportunities to advance, you know, our downtown core via conduit, while the big buildings, business development. Because I think if it's based on just the terms of reference that are here being the communications on construction, we're not going to even have a committee together before this thing is halfway done. So are we kind of, you know, past the point of, you know, doing a communications committee in essence for the construction or demolition project? Or should we just look at a more encompassing with kind of wrapping what the DTIC does? I mean, those people could be invited or, you know, they could put their names forward for a bigger downtown improvement committee that a city led as opposed to a non-city committee? I'd appreciate any thoughts or feedback from anybody.
Oh, Council Benson, you haven't spoken yet. Sure.
I think just to remember that communication was one piece of this. The the larger piece of my motion was for the disruption of and thinking of it as both the demolition. I think the staff report also talked about the B C Transit construction and eventually construction of the the building and the effect it's going to have on businesses where they have a conduit they can come to. There's people around the table that can make recommendations to council. So a couple of the businesses that reached out to me, which prompted me to make this, was concerned about parking if things like that, that the DTIC, I don't think would really have the the knowledge around the table with staff members and be able to make that recommendation to the council. So communication was one like piece of it. A lot of it was how we can make this project that the city is taking on and causing like a quite a big disturbance and really focusing on on that.
Council Castle.
Yeah, I was actually, thanks, Council. That was one of the questions I had as well. If the committee that you and Paul said on could not be incorporated to kind of deal with and address some of these issues. But I appreciate Council Benson's comments as well, zeroing in specifically on this construction might make it simpler. So my, another question that I do have, just looking at the committee to be composed, we got two, two members of city council. And we have the mayor. Do we need the mayor, I believe, my question on this committee, is that, is that is that necessary or is it something that we can maybe look at? Kind of trimming it down and the senior staff member, I would assume that would be somebody from Public Works that's kind of working with the contractor?
I would suggest it would be whoever, what project, whoever they're discussing would be the right person at the time, but these are all things for council to decide. It's their select committee is saying.
Well, I guess my question, my my question being through the chair, does the mayor need to be sitting on this committee? I mean, if you go ahead with it, just to kind of, is it something that we need to kind of trim down a bit?
Well, the mayor would like to be sitting on that committee.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely. I was questioning the three members of the community at large, actually. I just sort of thought that, you know, I think it should be more about downtown. Downtown businesses, maybe a few more businesses. I remember when we were having a discussion about the B C Transit and we have the three options. And there was about ten business owners that came together to talk about those three options. And that's how we ended up with the option that we have now. And I think that's what we have to worry about. It's not just the businesses, but maybe we get somebody from the downtown residents that are living in the apartments above the businesses, you know, instead of the three members of the community at large. I I just think that's, those are the people, those are the businesses that we're trying to connect with and communicate with. And I think that the City of Trail Facebook page would probably do the larger community of communication part, but, you know, what that looks like, yeah, we don't know. Council Benson.
Well, I agree. First, I was wondering if maybe the name of it could be changed so it's not confusing with the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee, which has a subset of, so maybe something more specific to the Big Blue Group or something. And then, and then also my same comment with you is if, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have the the community at the large, but I would like a preference for people that do live in the downtown core.
True, but on that note, we do have the abilities to select ultimately, you know, it falls on our hands to pick who we want. And we can lean on that then.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Do you have any suggestions for a name, Council Benson?
Because I don't.
No, you. Council Martin?
There you go. Sorry, I'm late.
Like something like major downtown projects.
Something like that, major.
Council Wilson, would you have a name?
I said, sorry for being late. I know I'm coming late. I'd be interested in this committee as well.
Thank you.
Major downtown development committee?
Yes.
MDDC.
No more acronyms. This committee.
Excuse me, it sounds funner.
Anything else?
Hey, it sounds like we have a name. Council Hanson, were you trying to put your hand up?
Yes. I just, three different thoughts. So that's what I was kind of framing in my mind. I completely agree, Council Benson, with what you were saying about the about what's going on and the communications. And I think, you know, you know, having the major downtown development, I just I'm wondering how do we do we have it so specific that it's just for the development or when we get those, you know, the things for development in the downtown as a whole, instead of just big projects specifically? Do they look at things that would be beneficial to the downtown as a whole to make recommendations to council?
Good chair, I would focus just before we get too like big to focus just on this block, see how it works. And then from there you can use it perhaps as a a template for a future.
Or grow it.
Yeah.
Amen.
Yeah. But let's, I think if we just, if we make it too big, it won't, the terms of reference, well, the building will be. So I think just focus it small and impactful and then.
And I just, I just want to mention as well that we all, you know, the demolition is already set to go, right? And I believe, and Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've already been in communication with Claire about communicating what's going on down there. That's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, we've we've outlined communications as far as what's required of successful contractor. We've worked together as far as what communication we will put out as the city. You know, we intend to keep the public well informed as far as what's going on with this project.
If I could on that, I mean, it's communication. It's just how do we do that? It's not direct to each business, but is it just on our website?
Well, through the chair, I mean, there's components of advertising to businesses within a radius of the work that's going to be occurring. There's notices that are put out in hours up to before production or construction that's going to occur as well as, you know, like it. Yeah. Workation through Facebook and social media.
Yeah. It comes from that.
Just again, like the communication piece, like we have a a staff with that for all the city. I just the 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 reason of bringing this select committee forward was really for the kind of like the advice on mitigation strategies, those types of things of what are people that are being affected by this? How is it affecting their business? How can we, what can we do to help mitigate that? So that's kind of the really big juicy piece of this for the committee for me. So communication is always a part of it, but I just.
Communications, everything.
Absolutely.
I could go to do or die in communication. And on that to the chair, would we want to consider having our communication director as part of the committee on this? Or is that putting too much too much on staff?
Miss Butler. Yeah, thank you through the chair. If time permits, yes, we're just seeing a lot of work in her field that she may needs to get at. So far, Claire has been having to deal with everything reactive and we need to get to the planning stage of communications. And every time we put things on her, she's getting pulled away from that. So if she's available, I would say yes, but I don't want to put another thing. I think that the recommendations will come through and if that's direction to senior staff, then we take that to our manager.
Thank you.
So and I, again, going back to when the Union Hotel was demolished. A lot of the small businesses down there didn't know that it was happening until it was, you know, the weekend before. So it was really uncomfortable for them because they couldn't plan their deliveries or their appointments and stuff like that. And I I think that's what we're trying to avoid this time. We want people to know well ahead of time. You know, when things are happening and what, you know what I mean? What day and just really be planned around that. We have to think about our small businesses and their business. Go ahead, Council Cash.
Thank you through the chair, just to an example of of communication that are lack thereof. I live near the Glenmary School and if people come up to me, my neighbors, most of our our seniors in that area asking questions about when the demolition is happening. And nobody knows because, you know, there is an absence there of communication. So it's so important. That piece is just so important. And thank you to the chair.
Okay, so the recommendation is before you and we do have a couple of things.
Can I just ask a few questions? So is everybody okay with the functions that are listed here? You like them? Okay.
I think we're changing the membership a bit, aren't we?
Um, just we will make a note, this is up to three members in the community at large to be selected by council based on expressions of interest received. And we put a preference for people, we will put another line about people, preference will be given to those people that reside in the downtown core. Okay. Does that make sense? And then the name change of major downtown development committee, those are the only two changes that we would like to see.
Could we, sorry, through the chair, could we potentially have it so three members of the community at large with preference given to individuals living in the downtown core? Or a council discretion adding an additional business? So if we don't have, you know, you could have no one put their name forward that lives downtown. Right? And is or is it better for us to have someone, you know, that lives in Winita? You making a recommendation? What what's going on downtown? Or should we have the option to potentially add a couple of additional business individuals?
We can, we can align there to give you flexibility.
Yeah, I think just having the flexibility. So if we don't have any applicants, then we're not selecting because we're forced to select based on our terms of reference that we can add additional businesses.
Yeah.
Individuals, you know, in that area instead.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I was also thinking that maybe we might want somebody from South Kirk College to be part of the committee because, you know, they could be effective as well.
Not business, but in terms of.
Yeah.
I guess it's personal.
I would say that's business.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
We'll make them.
Yeah. Council.
Yeah, thank you. Do we need, again, I'm just looking at trimming it down, not is there two, we got two members of the Trail City Council. Do we need two is my question. Well, you have the mayor, you have, well, okay, no, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know. Is that we're okay with that? We do? Okay, thank you.
And I would suggest the first meeting of the committee that we will have Claire present and she can talk about her communications plan that she has for this project as well as Ben. Yeah. Good idea.
Mayor Jones, I would also like to say in my role with development and land that I would be very interested in helping participate and mitigating concerns also with my role with the downtown trail improvement committee for communications on the committee.
And well, that will be decided at another time once we start appointing.
Okay, so the recommendation is before you. And it is that council directs staff to bring back the downtown, oh, yeah, improvement advisory committee terms of reference to the next regular council meeting incorporating the recommendations and edits discussed in at the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, maybe at the whole meeting. Council Butler and Council Martin, all those in favor? Oh, thank you.
Thanks for the discussion, Council. It's much appreciated.
Okay, yeah, that was a good discussion. Item C is nine hundred Spokane Street demolition contract award and I would welcome Ben.
If I can just start by saying, as far as the discussion around communication and helping enable talent, understanding that we haven't made any recommendations or notices because the project has not been awarded at this point. You know, we look to improve on the way things have been done in the past, but we do have timelines that we have to work with them. So we hope that businesses and residents feel that we've looked after that better on this project.
Great, thank you, Ben.
So starting with my staff report for nine hundred Spokane Street, the purpose of this report is to provide counsel for quotations that were received for the demolition of nine hundred Spokane. I'm requesting consideration on both committee, the whole meeting here and at the regular meeting, April twenty eighth, in order to expedite the award of this tender and keep the project on schedule. The recommendation is that council accrue the award of nine hundred Spokane Street to local industrial partners limited, otherwise known as local industrial in the amount of eight hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty one dollars and forty five cents in G S T. In the background on this project, in twenty twenty four, the city acquired former Trail Working Tower building at nine hundred Spokane and following tracquisition, council expressed an interest in looking into the demolition of this building. As that assessment was done, identifying a number of hazardous materials, including asbestos and likely as paints, which would require abatement prior to demolition process. And RFQ was publicly advertised at the end of February twenty twenty five for the abatement of those hazardous material materials and demolition of the existing structure. And a mandatory site meeting was held with interested parties to ensure that they were familiar with the site and the conditions. We had quite a bit of interest. Thankfully, the city received six submissions in response to the public tender. I I don't know if you all have this in front of you or not. I can read out the numbers if you'd like me to.
Okay.
Ask me. Okay, so of those six local industrial submission was compliant, offered the lowest price and provided the most comprehensive proposal. Consideration of the criteria that was outlined in our R F Q. They demonstrated thorough understanding of the abatement and demolition components on that site as well as dealing with the asbestos containing materials and lead based paints. They fulfilled all the necessary conditions as far as their quality, including insurance, bonding schedule and their experience and certification to the project. I have provided an option that council choose not to proceed with the abatement and demolition of nine hundred Spokane Street. I do not recommend this option as the demolition of this property provides an opportunity, as many of you have already expressed, to meet the draft conditions of our guiding principles around land use, housing and structure and collaboration in downtown core. And as far as financial considerations, funds for the abatement and demolition have been allocated and we're looking at them five year plan from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine. I've broken out some of the costs associated with this project, including the tender price, some consulting and a third party monitoring as well as some additional expenses that are expected around the the wood that we're looking to reclaim from that property. That's my recommendation for nine hundred Spokane Street. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Council Wilson.
That's a good question. I was just looking up the local industrial website. So they're on the Janelle?
Correct.
Did any downtown projects of this?
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, they have a number. They have quite an extensive experience working around and outside of this area.
Those are all my questions.
Awesome. Council Hanson, thank you. It's quite significant, the difference in the quotes and is there any potential changes, right? Because we all know we have a budget, we have a quote, but there's times that that changes with the cost of X, Y, and Z that just magically appears. I mean, I'm hoping that there was no, you know, potential for additional thing. So this is an answer to that. And then my second question is when at the completion of this R F P, are they just to leave the property backfilled, gravel filled, not filled, fence, kind of what's the end of the look of the no nine hundred Spokane?
Sure. So a slight correction. So this was an R F Q, not an R F P, which does make a difference in that we have a set goal. And we are asking for a price, a fixed price based on the work that we've expressed, we completed as as opposed to a proposal where they can dictate what work is to occur. So I would not expect additional fees beyond any changes that we would make throughout the project. And as far as the finished site, when we're done, the recommendation through the quote was that some catch basins be placed, the site be filled, graded and compacted to be suitable for parking. Expecting that whatever we need for with this location can take some time and that we can utilize that land. So there are the temporary, no post barriers placed around the outside. And I think the quest, quick estimate, we had between sixty and seventy parking spaces that could be utilized on.
Thank you.
Might need a charter. Thank you so much. Is there any other questions for that?
Yes, such a difference in the in the proposal that was pretty amazing. So I just want to say thank you for the doing that work that you've done on that. It's exciting and then we're looking forward to see what it's going to look like after everything comes down. If there's no other questions, so we'll move on to the recommendation. And the recommendation is that council approve the award of nine hundred street. Sorry, nine hundred Spokane Street demolition contract to local industrial partners limited in the amount of eight hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty one dollars and forty five cents exclusive of G S T. Council Hanson and Council Benson, all those in favor? Thank you. That's what was on, we only need to be far. These are ten. Okay, and moving on to nine hundred and one Helen Street demolition contract award.
There's going to be some repetition here. I'll need to throw it in the same. The purpose of this report is to provide counsel quotations sheet for nine oh one Helen Street demolition project. Again, staff is requesting consideration at both committee at the whole and the regular meeting, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, text that I get this process. The recommendation is that council approve the award of nine oh one Helen Street to local industrial partners, otherwise known as local industrial in the amount of eight hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty six cents exclusive G S T. The background on this structure was in twenty seventeen, the city took ownership of the C S Williams Clinical Trail Hospital due to a number of years of delinquent taxes. The building has continued to deteriorate and been a cost to public works as far as securing and maintaining that facility in that time. As that assessment was performed on this structure and identified a number of materials requiring abatement prior to demolition. And again, RFQ was publicly publicly advertised at the same time in February twenty twenty five for the abatement of those hazardous materials. We held us a mandatory site meeting again, knowing the scope of this work so that contractors were aware of what they were getting themselves into. And through that process, the city received four submissions in response to the public tender. Of those four submissions, again, local industrial came out. Their submission was materially compliant, offered the lowest price and provided the most comprehensive proposal and consideration of the criteria that was outlined in our RF Q. They demonstrated thorough understanding of the abatement demolition components of the project and they fulfill all the necessary conditions required to bond in insurance, schedule and experience and certification on the project of the scale. The option that is provided to council is that they choose, should you choose not to proceed with the hazmat abatement and demolition of nine oh one Helen Street? Again, staff will not recommend this option as this building is unusable in its present state and costs associated with the abatement and demolition will be continued to increase. Funds again for this project were included in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine five year plan. And the following table on the next page aligns some of those expenses. Again, there's some consulting, abatement, monitoring fees as well as the tender price. Again, I'll open up if there's any questions.
Any questions, Council Wilson?
But is there a start date for this work?
The original start date was May thirteenth. We'll push back two weeks. So if it's awarded by council, I would be having discussions with the successful contractor about whether they can still meet that timeline or whether we need to push it back.
So major team for potentially push.
But but potentially be.
Soon, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, great, thank you, um, Council Hanson, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mayor Jones, um, the, I see the, there's a cost differential, it seems like, uh, the CS Williams building is significant, a smaller footprint. Uh, would that be just because the asbestos abatement higher in that building compared to nine hundred Spokane?
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, nine oh one Helena poses a few different challenges as far as abatement and cleaning and, um, yeah, other issues around this, the size of the structure is not. Uh, so much the cost as the abatement itself.
I can, so class, I did.
Thank you, sir, chair, that was my question, uh, thank you.
Okay. And Council Martin, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, sir, chair, and. What about the Colander when they say buildings are going down, what, what happens or if they can't be in that building, I would, I would imagine? Yeah, uh, so we've been in discussions with the Colander, obviously, this is gonna have a huge impact on their business. Um, they've been very welcoming and and helpful in allowing us to gain access and use their facility through the process as we're gonna have to be. On their building to do some of that abatement work. The walls themselves are entirely separate, there will be no structural component of the Colander that will be, um, disrupted during this process. Uh, so in the end, it's gonna be a benefit to them and I think they understand that, thank you.
Great. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the recommendation. And the recommendation is that council approved the award of nine oh one Helen Street demolition contract to local industry. Industrial Partners Limited in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents exclusive of GST. Council Cashoff, all those in favor? Thank you, that was carried, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
So is there any other reports? I don't see anything on the agenda. Want to question period? See anything for question period, um.
We have three attendees currently, if any of the attendees are watching, please use the raise hand function if you have a question, Council. Seeing them.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to item number nine and that's the resolution to rise um from committee of the hall. That council consider and resolve to rise from the committee of the hall. The resolution. Is there motion, thank you, Council Benson, all those in favor?
We need a second there on that.
Okay, is there someone, thank you, Council Martin. And all those in favor, thank you, that was carried. Uh, the next resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion. Of the meeting as a subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter, section ninety-one B. The uh, community charter, section ninety-one G. The community charter, section ninety-one L. And further that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six o'clock. Eight, tonight, P M. And further that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of the, of our meeting. Thank you, Council Butler, all those in favor, oh, a second, please. Council Benson, all those in favor, that was carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.